Bryce said, uh, his voice is notorious for not being picked up by electronics.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's gonna be a challenge.
Some kind of built in like blocker?
I don't know what it is. I think it's like the, the wavelengths of my voice.
Oh, wow. Interesting. Okay.
Well, I can definitely hear you.
I can hear you, so I think we're good.
It's working this time.
Hi, welcome to Studio Stillwater. My name's Michelle Charles.
And my name is Chris Peters.
And today we are talking to.
Bryce Moody.
And he is a candidate for Stillwater City Council. All right. So Bryce, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for having me. I really am happy to be here.
All right. Well, this is exciting. We've got a city council race with a whole bunch of people running.
I know, right?
This is unusual.
It is.
Were you expecting to have so many people?
I was not. No. No, I was, I was kind of really expecting to be, be more like the other ones and one, maybe two people running.
Right, right. Yeah, I think everyone was surprised to have seven people on the ballot.
No, I'm super happy to see it though. It's, it's really good to, to have this much engagement.
I agree because engagement is an ongoing struggle and I really do think that having these contested seats allows people to, you know, it forces you to have conversations you wouldn't have otherwise, right?
It does. It really does. Yes.
Yeah, I think it makes a big difference. So let's get to know you a little bit.
Okay.
Let's talk about like, what brought you to Stillwater?
Well, I was actually born and raised here. I've been here, um, for 33 of my 35 years.
So the stork.
Yes, yes. Um, and my family's actually been here since the land around. We settled and, um, so I'm fifth generation Stillwater born.
Oh, wow. All right. Very cool. So are there any streets named after any of your family members or anything?
Uh, I don't think so. No.
Okay.
I don't think we were ever that big in the, in the community.
Okay. All right. You know, there's usually, I'm, I'm always shocked when I start looking back at the early history of Stillwater. How many things are, are named after actual people? If you look at, um, Chester and Fern Streets, they're actually named after the children of a couple of, I think it was Robert Lowry's kids, I think.
I don't know, but there's.
Yeah, one of the town fathers. Yeah, they were named after one of the children of one of the town fathers. I don't know. Anyway, it's just interesting to me. Okay. So birth, you've been here your entire life?
Yes.
What was growing up in Stillwater like?
Uh, I really enjoyed it. I love the small town feel that we have. Um, sometimes you feel like there's not quite enough to do here in Stillwater. Especially as a, as a growing teenager, you're kind of like, what, what do I want to do today? Can I go bowling? Let's go bowling.
I could go to Boomer Lake.
Or I guess I'll go to the movies.
Okay. So you grew up in Stillwater, regular kid, think your hometown's boring, just like we all did. There's nothing to do. Uh, but how do you think growing up in Stillwater shaped you? How do you think it made you who you are?
Well, I, I think it actually really left me with a really open mind because a lot of Stillwater residents are super open minded about all, everything. So, um, I was glad to be in, in this kind of open town, the, that I grew up in. And maybe, it may be a rural town of Oklahoma, but, um, that's, it's different from a lot of other ones.
My husband calls it an island on the prairie.
Yes, it really is.
Yes. You know, we're kind of close to everything, but we're not too close. And we do have people from literally all over the world who come here and, you know, all over the country with a lot of different perspectives, a lot of different points of view, a lot of different needs.
Yeah. And, and that's one thing that I really found, um, with going to high school here in Stillwater, you do have people, uh, you're going to school with people from other cultures and you're learning those cultures along with them. Cause I, I mean, I, I really did talk to everybody and learn, learn cultures. I loved it.
You know, you don't always expect to get that in, in the, in middle America, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Very cool.
In school, what was, uh, what were some of the things you were involved with, uh, when you were in like, you know, middle school, high school?
Well, um, I was in band from sixth grade until I graduated high, until I graduated.
Which instrument?
Uh, I played the trumpet and then senior year I tried to switch to French horn, but it probably didn't pan out as well.
That mouthpiece is a lot smaller.
It is.
I was clarinet. What did you play, Chris?
I played the tuba.
Yeah.
Ooh, okay.
I needed the big mouthpiece.
Yeah, we've actually talked in the newsroom about how we could start a newsroom, like marching band.
Oh.
Most of us played some kind of instrument.
That might be something.
There you go.
Yeah, no, I, I started with trumpet and I could not hit any high notes whatsoever. And then, uh, and then the band teacher, this was in middle school, uh, was like, hey, what if you try out, uh, well, it was, they were sousaphones at the time, marching ones. And, uh, cause they were also the school owned ones.
Right.
And, uh, cause nobody can go and afford their own like sousaphone or tuba.
Sure.
And, uh, and it stuck.
All right.
Well, I really wanted to play the trombone, but I got short arms and I couldn't, couldn't reach it.
All right. So did you play?
About that.
Yeah. I, I never thought about limitations on trombone players. Wow. That's really interesting. I, I don't know why I wound up with clarinet. I really don't. I played violin when I was really little. Like when I was, well, when I was like fourth grade or something out in California, we had like a little school orchestra. I wasn't very dedicated to practicing. But anyway, then we moved here and I did that.
I was also in my local 4H club here.
Oh.
It was globally 4H. I grew up, um.
Did you show?
I did.
What'd you show?
I showed pigs.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
We had a whole conversation about pigs the other day. We've determined that pigs are awesome.
They are. They are amazing animals.
Is there any pigs name that comes to mind? Like your favorite pig that you, that you named?
It was probably my first one that I kept and, and bred and started breeding my own show pigs.
Okay.
Her name was Premier.
Premier.
Oh, wow. That's a fancy pig.
Yes.
What kind of pig was she?
She was a Poland China.
Oh, nice. So she must've been really good quality if you kept her for breeding stock.
She was. Um, she actually, um, one of hers actually ended up reserve grand champion at, uh, Stillwater, at our Pan County Fair.
Oh, nice. Very good.
Which is very odd for a Poland China. You don't see them winning those high ones very often.
Oh, why is that?
They're not a popular breed.
Okay.
Oh, you just don't, there's just not a whole lot of them out here.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, and then in 4H, did you do other stuff besides livestock showing?
I did. I, um, I was a livestock judge. I did livestock judging.
Okay.
Um, I did wildlife judging, which was a lot of fun.
Wildlife?
So really it's more of you're judging the habitat than the wildlife.
Okay.
So, um, there are three different categories in it. And the first category is, um, they mark little areas of, of food. And you have to identify it and then identify what, what you might catch, what you might see here because of what's here.
Based on the forage that's available?
Yeah. And then, uh, another one was, um, they give you a map and they're, they put a circle on that map.
Right.
And judging by what you see in that circle, you have to, you're gonna have to tell them what you're gonna be seeing, uh, what kind of animals you might see in that, in that area.
That's fascinating. I didn't even know that was a thing. Did you, Chris?
No. And I, my, my next thought is like, well, how do you, how do you prove it? Are you setting up like game cameras or something like, how?
So most of it was more theory than, than actual, um, getting it, but, uh, we're seeing it. So, but like, uh, I write, if it was over a, a riparian area, which would be a, a creek or creek bed or something like that.
Right.
You know, you're gonna more than likely see deer there.
Yeah.
Sure. So, okay, that makes sense. So what kind of wildlife do we have around here?
Uh, we actually have quite a bit. We have rabbits, uh, grouse deer.
Grouse? What's a grouse?
Uh, it is actually kind of a, um, if you think of a guinea fowl.
Okay.
That's kind of what you're gonna look like, but they're, they're not the, the gray and black. They're kind of brown.
Okay. So it's like a, it's a big game bird though. Okay. All right. What else?
Well, um, I did many, uh, with the 4H, I did quite a few, uh, community projects. We did artwork for, um, our, um, local, um, nursing homes and such.
Oh, nice. Okay.
And especially during Christmas time, because a lot of them, uh, don't get a lot of Christmas cards. So we always did Christmas cards for all the residents.
Oh, that's really, that's a great project.
It is.
So you're still kind of in a, in a service, like hands-on caring for people kind of thing, right? You, are you a nurse?
Yes, I am a nurse. I'm a home health nurse. Um, I travel around to Stillwater and the surrounding area and see our patients in their home.
Okay.
In a comfortable setting for them.
How has that been with, during this pandemic? I'm, I mean, I'm just imagining that for some of these people, you know, uh, getting visitations, like you are probably a, a primary person that they see a lot.
Yes. Um, and, uh, especially with the, with people quarantining and, and trying to stay away from their elderly, their elderly, uh, family members who, um, who could easily catch it and, and have serious problems with it. Um, we are one of their main sources of interaction. It's, um, and it, it's sad sometimes to see, to see that. And, um, but most of them do get phone calls and such as that from, but those aren't the same as, as a face-to-face interaction.
Yeah, that's gotta make you so much more important to them though. I mean, I'm, I'm sure. Wow. So, I mean, that's a really important job and you're, you're dealing with people who have a lot of needs. So what do you do to relax when you get home?
Um, I like to read. Uh, I play games on my phone, um, watch movies.
All right. Favorite book, favorite game, favorite movie?
Yeah.
Or, or just top 10?
Just something you like.
So favorite book is actually gonna be a book series. It's probably not gonna surprise you. Uh, it's the Harry Potter series.
All right.
I love it.
All right.
Uh, favorite movie? Uh, The Princess Bride.
That is a great one.
It is a great movie.
Such a good one.
Favorite game? Um, well, right now, um, I'm playing a lot of Evermerge. It's kind of a, I, it's just a merge game, something to, to, uh, to clear the mind and just zone out for a little while.
Yeah.
And we all need that sometimes, don't we?
Yeah.
All right. So, um, so what else do you do for fun?
Uh, well, um, once a week, um, I make a point to go to lunch with my best friend. We've, we met six years ago and we have been like almost inseparable ever since. I probably annoy her boyfriend so much. But we are best friends and it's, it's a real joy to me to, to be able to spend that time. So.
That's nice to have those connections though, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah. I think, I think there's so many people right now who feel disconnected. I mean, from the pandemic, but also, I mean, I think even before that, we're just not getting, you know, that quality face-to-face time with each other so much anymore. And once you get to be an adult, it's hard to make friends. I mean, I don't know why, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, it's kind of like you, you don't know what you're missing until it was gone scenario.
Right.
I, I think we're all kind of in that. So.
I agree.
We're waiting for it to come back. So then we can.
Right.
Uh, not miss it anymore.
Yeah, I'm probably, I'm probably being very nostalgic and really, um, over remembering, uh, how social I was before this.
Yeah.
I would say I'm, I'm exaggerating that in my own mind. Okay. Well, let's, let's get a little more serious, Bryce.
Okay.
And, um, what kind of things are important to you?
Um, important to me? Um, well, my career is a nurse. I would love being a nurse, um, helping people, um, being there for people. That, that has always been near and dear to my heart. Um, I always dreamed of being a doctor.
Okay.
And found out that that took way too much money. I couldn't, I couldn't afford to make it through there. So I took a step back and I found nursing.
Okay.
That's where I've landed and that's what I love to do.
Well, you know, and you probably do have a lot more of the hands-on patient interaction than doctors would actually.
Right.
If that's really what you thrive on, that might be a benefit for you.
Yeah. And I really, I really think it was. So.
Okay. So it worked out for the best.
It did.
Have you worked on wards? Have you done other, um, I mean, have you worked in other medical settings?
Um, well, uh, I have worked in a, um, an assisted living. I found that one a little bit tough for me because I would get so close to my residents and then when they passed it hurt. I was.
I bet.
It was, it was hard for me.
That would be really hard. So. Okay. So home health is kind of your sweet spot right now? Okay. Very good. So, I mean, with your, with, with your values and your experiences and the things that are important to you, how does that lead you to serving on the Stillwater City Council?
Uh, I really just kind of see it as another extension of my service. Um, I, I wanna, I wanna help and I wanna lead and I wanna, I wanna continue at that with, with the community and spread it out even further than just my home health career.
Okay. All right. And I noticed that, um, I watched a, a candidate forum with you earlier today. And I noticed that you were the only candidate that really addressed the diversity issue.
Okay.
And I thought that that was a really good point because we do have such a diverse community and a lot of times you wouldn't know it.
We do. We really do. And, um, uh, to further on that, I would actually like to see some big cultural events. Cause we have cultures from all over the world here. Um, thanks to OSU and, um, a big cultural art, arts event or something like that would be just amazing around Stillwater.
And we have some of that stuff obviously happening on campus. Obviously you have student groups with all this stuff and.
Right.
But it, but to get that to bleed over.
Right.
I mean, my guess is it's just, we're not giving them an invitation.
Yeah. And we should, we should definitely work with those groups on campus to bring that out into the community.
Right. I mean, it, it sort of feels like the, the campus sort of has a little bubble around it that keeps, the students a lot of times aren't aware of what's going on in the community.
Right.
And then the community a lot of times is not completely aware of what's going on on campus or doesn't want to go there because of parking.
Right.
So, I mean, if there was a way to foster those connections though, because we've got all kinds of cool stuff going on. And, you know, it's just, everybody's not sharing it.
Right.
It'd really be nice to have, you know, build those connections. I mean, you know, what do you think we could do to, or do you think we need to build a stronger connection between the, the community that is the university and the, the town in the gown? How's that?
I, I, I think it's just communication. We really need to, to communicate better with them and, and, um, talk with their specific groups and, um, just really work with them and, and find something we can do to, that would exhibit these cultures out in, out in our community.
In, in term, now, what do you think we could do in our, in our community to increase, um, opportunities? I, I feel like a lot of the times, the reason you don't know how much diversity is here is because you're just not meeting people, right? We're not face-to-face. We're not making these connections. You know, I mean, we could meet people from more than a hundred, a hundred countries.
We can. Yes.
And we just don't necessarily know where to go to meet people.
Right.
I mean, aside from like maybe an arts festival or something, I mean, have you ever thought about something we could do to kind of build that? To me, that's the cool thing about Stillwater.
Yeah. I know. I haven't really thought on that one, but, um, we, I mean, outside of the pandemic, we could do, uh, a little meet and greet coffee thing or, um, try to bring people from different cultures in and, and talk with them and, and learn about their cultures. We, um, or even a music festival from, because all cultures have their own specific music too. And I.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So.
That would be very cool, actually.
Yeah.
If we could ever get block 34 done, we could have a global music festival.
Oh, man. It'd be so much fun.
Block 34 is another topic.
I know. It's a whole episode of its own.
But if it was, you know, as the, the trust there is kind of envisioned a Guthrie green, uh, of our own with a stage and, and plenty of green space. And then stuff like that. I mean, yeah, that'd be great.
It would be amazing. I can picture it now.
And it would be, I, I mean, I agree. I would love, uh, to be able to, to take my kids to a, a music festival or something that was a little more than, um, and not to put down, but a little more than just red dirt.
Yeah.
Or the, the local scene that's been here a while and, and mix it up. And, and every time I meet, you know, a musician, they're very like inclusive. They'll jam with anybody usually, you know? And usually the, the more you, you put together, uh, you know, the more different styles and stuff, you're gonna attract more people.
I, I say we start advocating for a global, you know, arts festival, you know?
I totally agree with that.
World music and arts. I think that's what we need to start working.
That's your task.
There you go. If you get on the council.
All right.
Day one. Well, first you gotta finish block 34.
Right.
Then you can do it. Okay. So serving on city council, you seem like a really, really nice man. Let me say this.
Okay.
You seem like a very nice and very pleasant person who likes to get along with people.
I do. I love getting along with people. I'm, and I'm one of the easiest people to get along with. So.
Okay. So given what you've seen over the last year, why on earth do you want to be on the city council?
Oh, um, well, one, I, I think I could do it and not have it and not have issues. I mean, there's, I, something about my personality. People can't send, seem to can't, can't stay mad at me.
I can see that. If you guys could see this, he, he looks positively cherubic.
Be like, uh, no, we're not gonna pass your zoning request. Oh, that's okay. That's okay. I got it. That could be a, that could be a secret.
It could.
Power there.
I know. That could be your superpower, actually. So, okay. So you feel like you could, I mean, but people have been getting a lot of abuse hurled at them and everything. Do you let that roll off your back pretty well or does it hurt your feelings?
Nothing hurts me.
Okay.
One, as a nurse, you can't let anything hurt you really. Um, and really the only thing that does is, is are those bathings of the people you follow, you've come to really know. So.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. There's, there's not much that, that I can't just roll off.
Okay. So you're incredibly resilient. That is a good thing for someone in public life. Absolutely. What should people know about you? What are we not asking you about that you think people ought to know?
I really don't know. I mean.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm kind of just a simple man. I don't really, um, have a lot about me that's not already out in the open.
Right.
So.
Let me ask you this. If elected, uh, what are you hoping to learn, uh, in that position?
I am really hoping to learn, um, more of the ins and outs of politics. I kind of know the general basis of how stuff is supposed to work. But I want to know like the more in-depth ins and outs of it.
Okay. Because you did say earlier that you're interested in maybe moving on and looking at other public office at some point, right?
I am. Yes.
Okay. So you're viewing this as a beginning of something.
It is. Yes.
So what's your final goal?
I mean, I would love to be the first president for, of the United States from Oklahoma. That would be a lot of fun.
That would be cool.
But that's a high aspiration.
Okay. Would you settle for governor?
Sure.
All right. And we'll say we knew him when.
I, I do have, uh, a respect, especially after this year, politicians, and I put up air quotes.
Right.
Uh, that, that did start local.
Right.
Because it's, you know, local problems are those real day-to-day problems. I mean, when we had the ice storm, you know? Uh, you know, the, the president of the United States can go through and say, okay, yes, we'll approve some sort of emergency funding. And it's usually, you know, way after, like, we actually need the money to do things. But it's like the government right here that's like, okay, we need to approve some sort of funding transfer or something like that.
Right.
To pay for this. Like it affects people every single day.
It really does. Yeah.
Yeah. As we are seeing, I mean, and that's a perfect example of the ice storm because we've got all this cleanup, right?
Right.
And then the city's been kind of strapped for, you know, here recently. And, uh, you know, so now they're scrambling to try to get all the, um, all the debris cleaned up.
Right.
And, and get it taken away. And we do have some federal funding, of course, uh, President Trump before the end of his term. You know, approved some FEMA money for that.
Right.
But that's reimbursement and it might take you a year to get it.
Right.
So, I mean, but there are so many things, right? With local, local government. I mean, it's so funny because we get hung up on the national level, even the state level. But I would argue that what happens at city hall has a much bigger impact on your day-to-day life.
It really does. It really has a much bigger impact on the day-to-day life of, of people.
Yeah. I mean, so what do you think about the streets? Let's hear about that. Most people have opinions on the roads.
Well, uh.
Or broader transportation.
Transportation. Let's look at that. We can go beyond potholes and we can look at the whole system.
We, we need some work on, especially some of our side streets. They, they are, they, they seem to fall to the, to the wayside sometimes. We, we keep our, our main streets going and, um, let those fall seams sometimes. And it really, it really bugs me. And as a home health nurse, I'm driving those backstreets all the time.
Oh, true. Cause you're going through all the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So in, and in terms of, I mean, when you're up around the college or when you're in some of these areas where there are, um, you know, a lot of people who ride bikes. I mean, what do you think about, do you think our community is doing enough to make safe spaces for bicycles and pedestrians and things like that? It's an ongoing conversation in Stillwater.
It is. Um, I think there's a lot more that we could do. Um, I think we're, we are doing some, but we're not doing enough. I don't think.
Right. I mean, it's, it's weird because you've kind of got that, that, uh, you know, you've got that schism sort of, you've got the people who are like, roads are for cars and you just need to stop spending money on these other things. And then you've got other people saying, you know, if you would, if you would build infrastructure for the bikes, you wouldn't have to be mad at the bikes.
Right.
And everybody, and you know, and then more people would ride bikes. And then the heavy cars wouldn't be riding on the streets, tearing them up. And the streets would last longer. There's like this whole thing, right?
We could have an entire show and maybe we should at some point.
Probably should.
We could probably bring in some, you know, some experts and stuff.
I, I agree.
But, um, like the actual costs of, of our roads.
Right.
Yeah.
And the continual maintenance and, uh, honestly, how, if you go talk to Monty or, you know, city engineer.
Right.
How many millions of dollars do we need if we were gonna like fix everything?
Yeah.
Just to, just to make it like modern and, and good. And it's, it's unfathomable.
To, to reconstruct a mile of road, it's like a million dollars per mile, per lane.
Right.
And that's a lot of million dollars in Stillwater. Now luckily we found out that the roads are more structurally sound than we feared they were. They're just, you know, terrible in terms of their ride.
Right.
So they really kind of need some resurfacing and smoothing.
Or the roads are right, but the pipes or any of the underground stuff is, needs replaced. So you gotta get through the road to get to them.
There is that. We got a lot of infrastructure.
We do.
Yeah. So how much do you know about infrastructure? Are you excited to learn about sewer lines?
Oh, yes. Yes. I'm excited to learn about all of it. Um, I will admit that I don't know a whole lot, but I do know a little.
Nobody knows very much about it when they start, to be honest. I mean.
My, my dad was a supervisor, a maintenance supervisor at the hospital. And so he's done a little bit of everything and he's taught us a little bit of everything. So, I kind of, I kind of know ins and outs of a little bit, but not a whole lot.
You know what? Someone who can learn a little bit about a lot of things, that, that's not a bad thing, really. It might come in hand. It might come in handy in public life, to be honest.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. You really do. I, I think of the, the city councillors now and how they have to, you know, you kind of have to understand a little bit of like zoning. And what's the difference between like form-based code and non-form-based code? And what is form-based code?
Right.
And, and so you can, you gotta know enough so you can ask the right questions. When, you know, city staff or something's coming up and they're presenting your, their plan and they're like, what's the recommendation? And, you know, it would be super easy just to go with whatever they say.
Right.
But the, the challenge seems to be the amount of time that's required to go into this job. So, talking with some other people, they're like, man, that, that have, you know, been city council or mayor or something in the past, is you don't really know how much the city really does and how much, uh, goes into, into the job until you get it.
Right.
How do you think you're gonna be able to kind of shoulder that additional load? Cause you gotta kind of shoulder, uh, also citizens' concerns of emailing you and saying, why aren't my sticks picked up? Or, or I got this big old pothole in front of my house.
Right.
Um, how do you kind of take on that additional weight?
Well, I think I have a little bit of advantage of some of the, over some of the other ones. I don't have a family right now, so I don't have, I don't have that extra, extra burden to put on.
Okay.
So.
So you don't have a kid that you have to run to soccer practice or something like that.
It might cut into the movie time, book time or game time.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
All right. Very good. You know, actually talking about zoning, this is a weird thing, but when, um, they first started talking about form-based code, they were contrasting it to, uh, Euclidean zoning, which is your standard zoning. And I thought, what does zoning have to do with geometry? And it turns out nothing. It's actually named for the city where it was started, Euclid.
Interesting.
And I can't remember what state it was in.
Interesting.
I want to say like Illinois or somewhere.
Single people don't necessarily always get representation. Like when we go to, you know, elect somebody, it's like, oh, I'm a family man. Or I've, you know, got all this stuff. I mean, you do have family. You've got five generations.
Right. Yeah. But if you're not like, you know, I'm that young dad or I'm a grandpa and I want my, or you know, I want my grown kids to stay here or something. I do think we need a lot of different perspectives on the city council. I mean, are there any perspectives that you think are kind of lacking when you look at what goes on in terms of representation in our city government?
One, uh, to be honest, one I've, I've never seen on our city council is anybody from the LGBT, LGBTQ community.
Yeah, at least not openly.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. That is absolutely true. You know? You know, in Stillwater though, I mean, we do finally have Payne County Pride as an organization. And that felt like a big step.
It was.
You know, to have that first pride festival a few years ago. Of course, then weather.
Right.
You know, kind of messed up the, the next one, but, um, I don't know. I mean, I, I think we're making strides, but I mean, what else do we need to do?
Work with other cities who, who have theirs and, um, see how they work, work it out and, um, partner with our, um, organization on, on campus.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Okay. Well, you have anything else you want to say?
Definitely appreciate you guys having me here.
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thanks again to Bryce Moody for joining us. Before we part, I'd like to ask a favor. If you liked the show, tell your friends about it. Our vision at Studio Stillwater is to elevate local voices and tell local stories. This is where you come in. Maybe you know a friend who has an amazing story to share, or maybe that story is yours. We want to hear it. You can get in touch with us via email, studiosstillwaterok@gmail.com or for the social lights, slide into our DMs on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. You can also send us a voice message by going to anchor.fm forward slash studio Stillwater. Just hit the add message button to record right from your phone or computer. We would love to feature your voice in a future episode. Finally, check out the show notes. There you will find links to everything we discussed on the show. Thanks again for joining us. Don't forget to vote.